Public hearing to order, and then we'll move to our meeting at seven o'clock. We're having a public hearing for the tax rate. There was a legal notice from the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky. The tax rate information for 2015, the tax rate proposed for 2014 was thirty point three seven eight cents per $100. Revenue anticipated is $4,606,658. The tax rate proposed for 2015 is point three nine zero per $100. Revenue anticipated is $4,835,654. The compensating tax rate for 2015 was point three seven five per $100 with a revenue anticipated of $4,649,668. Revenue from new property, $46,177. Revenue from personal property, $51,137. This is the public hearing for the tax rate. Is there anyone who would like to address counsel on the tax rate? Ron, you've got...
Mayor, we do have the written correspondence from a council member who was unable to be here tonight that we need to have read into the record. And it was asked that the members be provided a copy, so if we could relate those.
Would you like me to go ahead and read this?
This is a statement from Adam Meyer on the tax rate to be read at 9:815 Tax Rate Public Hearing. Mayor Haas and fellow members of council, while I intended to be present at tonight's meeting to discuss the tax rate, I was unfortunately admitted to the hospital this morning for a health issue, not able to attend. That said, I did want to pass along my position for consideration by the other members of council. As you may recall, during our discussion of the budget, I proposed a passing, a budget-neutral budget instead of the budget-positive budget that included $76,460 as revenue, as reserve funds. The reason that is, I feel fiscal management of the past has put us on sound financial footing and given us a satisfactory reserve to utilize a budget-neutral approach by computing our tax rates. This is not to say that I do not favor continuing fiscally responsible behaviors with our city staff that allows us to further strengthen our reserve by coming in under budget. It's only to say that I do not see the need at this time to pass the maximum tax rate allowed by law, HB 44. As such, I would like to propose an alternative tax rate for consideration, point three seven eight for $100. This would produce the revenue needed to cover our budget, less the $76,460 that was allocated as reserve amounts. The compensating rate is listed as point three seven five per 100, and the rate that was proposed for council's consideration is three point nine zero, point three nine zero per 100, compensating rate plus 4 percent. This is expected to bring in $4,835,654 in revenue. If we remove the $76,460 from the $4,835,654, we would need $4,759, $4,759,194 in revenues. The proposed alternate rate of point three eight three per 100 would yield about $4,761, $761,281 in revenues, which is sufficient to cover the budget amount less the reserve. Overall, this alternate would result in a 1.3 percent increase to the current rate or a 2.1 percent increase over the compensating rate. Also, I do realize that this would cause a slight delay in the mailing of our tax bills, but I do think the rate is more appropriate and any delays would be minor. Thank you for your time and consideration. Regards, Adam Meyer.
Does anybody have any other comments or concerns?
I think it might be a good idea to look at adjusting it more on an as-needed basis or revisiting the idea.
I had brought this up a long time ago when I first got on council. Essentially the same kind of thing, trying to go with a neutral budget. And House Bill 44, after I got to understand it more, because it is very confusing on how the whole thing works with the compensating rate, I came to realize that if we didn't have House Bill 44 and we could set a tax rate for a neutral budget every year, it'd be a non-issue. But if you could look back over, and staff did a great job with giving us information, if you look back over those years, a lot of years went down, other years where it goes up depending on what the property values are and whether there's new property added to the tax rolls. If we didn't have House Bill 44, then you could do the neutral budget without a problem, without the concern for referendum. And so historically, the city has always gone with a compensating rate plus 4 percent to try to stay within that. And looking at the revenues and try to make, we're supposed to be somewhere in the 25 percent reserve for a, based on the, what's the new Gadsby or whatever the financing thing for the finance department, the new way we switched over the...
Yeah, the governmental scheme is accountable.
Right. Yeah, okay. And we're supposed to have somewhere around 25 percent. I think we're like 16 percent at this point, so we're probably, we're in good shape, but it's not like we're over the amount, so I'm not the real finance person, so it took me a while to figure out this stuff out.
Yeah, I'm still working on that myself.
Yeah, yeah.
It just seems like we have a pretty good surplus and we're probably, as is.
Couple things. First of all, you know, it's unfortunate it's not at the meeting, but it's probably not even a problem if you don't attend the meeting to be able to introduce something. But I guess anybody could pick up on that and do that. We aren't voting on this tonight, we're voting on it tomorrow night either, this is just first reading, but yeah, I'm talking about things on a theoretical level. You know, it turns out Kentucky's a very low property tax state, and in my experience, pretty extensive, because you know, my profession. Property taxes, in my view anyway, are the fairest and most reliable types of taxes. And so if your property tax rate is low to start with, and you're looking for revenue to meet your budget, raising the property tax is a good way to do it. This House Bill 44, as people still refer to, was, I don't know, 30 years old?
Seventy-nine.
Okay, more than 30 years old. All right, so it's really limited property tax increases in Kentucky for a long period of time. It's happened in some other states too, and so what has happened is that local governments still need money to operate. And I remember doing this one year, it'd be interesting to see this again, that the increase in the property tax rate, the revenue generated, it doesn't generate a lot of additional revenue, I'm not quite following Ann's figures here, we couldn't figure them out in particular time, didn't even cover the increase in the operating costs of the city. The last year that I took a very detailed look, you know, looking at increases in pension costs, increases in healthcare costs, things like that, didn't even cover those increases in costs. I don't know if that's true this year, it's something we can look at, because you know, budgets go up and down in different categories every year, coming in a lot of things. So because of the property tax limit, as the mayor's pointing out, it does seem appropriate to take the amount every year if we think that our revenue is more than is necessary. If that's, you know, sort of Adam's point here, I would suggest we reduce another tax other than the property tax if we don't need the revenue. But the, you know, the argument as to whether we really need the revenue is a difficult question to answer, because all this is just based purely on projections, and that's all this is. And we, there are some very, I'll say unreliable, which really may be more unpredictable sources of revenue that can, you know, have wide fluctuations. We haven't experienced it as much lately, but years ago, there were some wide fluctuations in some revenues. And so to say, I mean, it is not, you know, we need, his number is $76,760 to the penny, to the dollar, to the whole dollar. I mean, that's just purely an estimate. You could have, in a budget this size, you could have a $76,000 overrun easily, bad winter, for example.
Yeah.
You know, or overrunning expenses or underrun in cash revenue generating, you know, by that amount. So to budget to the dollar is not really what you do conceptually, until we get things over time. And very well could be that at some point, we get to the point, as the mayor pointed out, we aren't there by some state yet, but we could get to the point that, you know, that we have sufficient reserves, that we can take more risk and budget more tightly. But I can tell you that I'm counsel for quite a while, and I quite often think about how thankful I am to prior council members that they left a good fund down, so we didn't have to worry about, you know, operating from day to day and getting into a budget shortfall situation. A $76,000, you know, per household would be pennies, maybe dollars, per household in the city. So, you know, I mean, I guess there are a lot of different points off on different issues, but I guess mainly saying that this is only a prediction, so we don't know to the exact dollar. Also, that I think, at the end of the day, I know people don't like property tax unless it's anything that's what they want, but you know, they pay a lot more in some other taxes and, you know, it just doesn't come all at once. But the property tax, particularly when our main expenses is police and fire and property owners are major beneficiaries of, you know, these public safety expenses, I think it's a fair and very reliable tax. So that's, those are my comments. Right. I tend to agree with those points. The reserve, the $76,000 is less than 1 percent. So as I was looking at that and contemplating, we talked with Adam, I talked directly with him about this last time, when we said the projected budget. And $76,000 is less than a 1 percent variance, so it's not an excessive amount of budget positive, because we're not running a business, right? We're running services in a city. And $76, I agree, I'm sure it's already eaten up by the two road failures that have already corrected this year. It, to me, it would not be fiscally prudent to go into a whole, into a year. But it's also not unprudent to be within a 1 percent variance. It seems like a good, well-thought-out budget. It's within the, within the 40s, right? Sorry to talk too far, but it's within, it's within a safe zone.
Yeah.
It's not excessive. It's not, not well-thought-out. And to me, a neutral will start a slope the other way, that you always have to play catch-up. And from what I understand about House Bill 44, which is not a great deal, I think staff did a really good job helping us understand that, we can never play catch-up. So if you have a real bad year, you can't raise taxes more. Or if we wanted to go out and work harder in the private sector, we could make more money, we could get a second job, we could do other things. We can't make up any losses. And then the other point is about this so-called surplus, that, these are reserved funds. These are not, as I understand it, and help me if I'm wrong, this $10 million surplus is not exactly that. It's, there are funds that are reserved for other things that have happened, that we have on the books that we're going to pay for. Tower Park Fund, KDOT Fund, Park Debt Service Fund, Pension Fund, these are things that are already spoken for, even though they're on our books and appear as a surplus, that that's, they're there for, to pay those debts eventually. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
And that's where I kept getting confused over the years, because of being used to business finances versus governmental. And then partway through my tenure on council, they changed the accounting method and made it more like business, but not completely. So if I were to go back to step one and say, let's do revenue neutral, I would budget a reserve for roads that slip down the side of the hill. That we're gonna, we're gonna budget $250,000 for emergency road repairs. We don't budget that, that's part of the reserves that we hold for that.
Under the KDOT funds, correct.
Right. And that's where the governmental side comes in. But if you're running a business, you'd say, okay, we need a contingency fund for this, we need it for this, we got pension liabilities we have to cover, we have all these things we have to cover, so. And that's where I get a little bit confused by it, especially since they changed the accounting method partway through. But yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
Are those reserves that, that are spoken of, the $10 million reserves, is that all liquid, or is part of that made up of capital or equipment or property or buildings or, there's a strictly liquid funds that are...
Well, the larger number, that's the thing. It's like, we have to show all our streets, we have to put a value to all our streets and put that on the asset side, which we didn't do that in the past. And that's what kind of, it took a while to change over to that method. Joe, you've got, can you give us a...
Well, technically, what that Gadsby regulation did was make us put a dollar figure on everything that the city had title to. Streets, road, streets, sidewalks, everything. So that, there's a $16 million number that's rolled up into that $22 million in net possession and net assets that is roads. I mean, we can't sell a road, we can't sell a sidewalk. And it's on our books, but in no way, shape, or form is it an asset that we can derive into cash flow.
Right.
And as far as the liquidity, you know, if they were, they're there, if they come due, they're spoken for.
Oh, yeah.
And for example, the pension fund, you know, if that's increased, if that liability's increased by this date, we're obligated to pay that at their call. So not having that funding available, obviously, would create an issue.
Yeah. And the reason I, the reason I ask is one of the conversations that I've had prior to this meeting was about that $22 million number, but the confusion was that not all $22 million of that was, was liquid, that 16 million of it was streets and sidewalks.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, infrastructure. And before, that was a couple, a couple months ago, but that was an unknown, still might be unknown with the individuals that I was speaking with, but that was an unknown factor. And now it's, now it's a known factor, that 16 million is concrete.
Uh, bricks.
Yeah. It's like the getting sold, so.
Any other comments? Anyone else? All right, well, we will close the, the public hearing, and you will open up the council meeting, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Benjamin, it's absent. Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Beasley?
Here.
Mr. Peterman?
Here.
Ms. Meyer is absent.
If you could have the, pleasure the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome. Okay. You all received the minutes of our last council meeting, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Beasley?
Sir.
If you have a second?
Sir.
We'll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Beasley?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
This is the time for visitors and communications, so if anybody would like to address counsel on anything. All right, thank you. Reports of officers, city administrators' report. Ron Dell?
Hey.
Welcome, by the way.
Well, thank you. Glad to be here. I do have a few things to report, so in your memo, I made reference to a number of these, and I did have a couple to add. So just going through those, the first item, the Duke franchise agreements, those have been signed and are filed, so that's a completed item. Someone made reference to the Tower Hill slippage. That was an emergency order. We were able to get our contractor under contract and complete the work in a timely fashion without added expense.
Yeah.
So that's the best thing to report.
Yeah.
They did encounter a depth of about a foot and a half, two feet deeper than what was anticipated, which, you know, we had a, on a, on a quick timeframe turnover, there were drilled piers or test holes that were done previously years ago outside that zone, and the project was designed off of those. So there was a little bit of variation on that, so they didn't get too deep, we didn't lose the hillside, they got done in a week, it was closed for a week, and it's open. So that's, that's all good news. And on budget. Those are unfortunate, but necessary. Updating the capital program, street program. The other pier wall was Cover Place. That was in this year's contracted capital program, and that project is also completed. That was a different contractor, came in on budget, they're completed. The city crews did the restoration of the street, and that was our only participation in that project. And it was completed with the installation of the barbed wire last week, so that one's completed. Churchill Drive, under construction. It's over 50 percent complete. The difficulty with that street is typically tear-out, replacement, concrete, curing. So there's about a seven-day window with each pour. So that project obviously takes a long time, there's a lot of disruption to traffic flow, changing traffic directions periodically. The good news on that one is basically everything from Stonewall Apartments, which includes Churchill Estates condos, Abbey's Daycare, and St. Paul's Church, all have access in and out from Newman Avenue, both lanes, both directions. They'll continue the last part of that. They're scheduled probably would include about six weeks while they're cooperating. So that's the schedule for Churchill. The rest of the street program is under contract with Regler. We, with our city crews, have done curb replacement on Arlington. Really, right now, are awaiting completion by the Water District on North Fort Thomas Avenue. We work closely with the Water District. They've had two different contracts, two different contractors on that street. We've had significant input regarding their construction and their methods of construction. We've worked with their inspectors. We have scheduled to meet with their engineers, their inspectors upon completion of their work. There have been delays with that project. The process puts the main in the ground first, then they have to test it. They had some failures in the second part of it, and had to go back and locate those, and that's really where the delays have come. They're making all their individual taps, residential taps at this point, and that project should be done before the end of the month. We are scheduled with our contractor, tentatively, for the first week in October to do all of our street work. And let's see, we obviously had some retirements. Mr. Martin is one.
Yeah.
He made his way on vacation from here. Of course Brad Adams and Dicky Booth, both retired. You have an appointment of Sam Burley in the Fire Department on your agenda. We have some conditional offers for two police openings. I'll refer to the chief, I think we might have some update, there were offers made by the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dell, I appreciate it. And much thanks to the mayor and the Safety Committee, and also to Mr. Dell and Mr. Martin for all the help last week with the interview process with our top applicants. We have made the conditional offer to two of the applicants, and they have gone through, you know, the formal background investigation that we have taken them through, and they both have passed. And obviously, we're moving on to, you know, they've accepted, you know, the offer of employment. We're going to be hiring Sean Donilon, he's a sergeant with Wilder Police Department. He has about 11 years in. We're also going to be hiring a guy named Matthew Marksberry, and he's a police officer with Newport Police. He has about seven years in. Both Sean and Matt will bring our department and our city a lot of different skill sets for our agency and for the community itself. They both performed extremely well throughout the whole process, as did the other applicants that actually went through the interview process. We're very happy with it, but we're really excited to get Sean and Matthew on board. They have given their two-week notices to their respective employers, and we're looking to have them starting on the 21st of this month. And we'd like to have them in front of council with Mark's new person on the 21st on that evening, and present them with their, their badges on that night. And they will be in uniform for a Merchions and Music event, which will be good for us to be fully staffed and have the two bodies that we really, truly need. We're excited, and it's great news.
I did have just a couple other things, real quickly. The targeted tax incentive program, and I also made reference to the sanitation district programs, which is their lateral replacement program. You may have read some information, there hasn't been a lot of coverage on it, although it was in the news leading up to the decision. And those things have been forwarded to Jan, I think has review on those, and then staff will review those with her, and those will be brought to your September, October meeting. The SD1 program requires an interlocal agreement. It also is centered around participation financially by the city, so it would be a departure from what they had in place previously. So we'll, we will frame those for you for consideration at another meeting. The VA homes, just a quick update on that. We have been working with representatives from the VA, and the threshold question continues to be the abatement and the process of transferring property ahead of possible abatement, or how that's financed through the developer, to have abatement performed and allow for transfer of property. We've received some verbal communication from the VA representatives at this time, that there is possibly some flexibility on transferring. It might involve potentially escrowing funds for amounts equal to the abatement, with possible transfer taking place with those funds being designated, and some performance date established, and a reverting of the property in the absence of performing the abatement process. Of course, that gets a little tricky with the city being involved in the sale as well. So we have contacted the developer, made them aware of this potential development. It would obviously change the MOA with the VA, so that process would have to take place. The developer obviously would have to buy into that as well. So we are set to meet with the developer, they're aware of this development, so we'll get their reaction to that before we engage in moving forward with any type of change in a memorandum of agreement, so. So that's kind of the update on that. And then the only other thing I had was, I just wanted to give some recognition. We had Highland Park Trail Development that I know had some press. And specifically, Chris Russ from our police department was involved, Jeff Moore, who was a Duke Energy employee, Ryan Alessandro, who's a cross-country coach, all kind of came forward with the idea of working with the city on a project that we've had on the books for a long time. And really, Duke stepped forward out of their community outreach through Jeff Moore. They actually wrote a check to the city for $1,000 for some of the expenses. We had a volunteer day, and made significant progress on completion of that trail. So those are all great things. We had an Eagle Scout project that was associated with that, so we're really excited about providing that amenity to the city in the form of a park trail, so. And those people are still working, by the way, on the weekend, so if anybody's so inclined, they're always looking for help, so.
Cool.
And then the only other thing I had is, our new website is up and running, so.
Yes, it looks great.
Everybody can take a look at that.
Yeah. Looks good. Any other reports of officers? Anybody have anything? Chief? Okay. Under new business, since we had the, since we conducted the public hearing for the tax rate, I think we need to have a motion to approve tax rate under new business. So I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Is it, what's the, for first reading, the word?
Yeah, yeah. It should have been up there. Is there any other discussion? We'll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller? What are we voting on?
The motion.
The motion to accept the tax rate from the, from the...
Proposed tax rate.
The proposed tax rate from the public... The proposed tax rate from the public hearing.
This isn't the first reading?
The first, no, the first reading is down below, but we have to actually have a motion to that effect after the, after the public hearing.
To include it on the agenda.
To include it on the agenda. Is that right?
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
They would be voting on, on accepting the tax rate?
Yeah.
No, I mean, that's, that's...
In order to, to ordinance persons...
Do we not have to have it?
Uh-huh.
So, I, in the past, I, my recollection is that we just had a first reading.
Okay.
Then we have a second reading, and then we vote on the second reading.
Never mind.
That's my recollection.
Okay. Is that all right? So, who made the motion? You want to withdraw your motion, and withdraw the second?
All of us.
Yeah.
Strike call, right?
Reverse the tape, back it up, and just edit that part out, and we don't know. Okay. So then we'll move ahead to Finance Committee report on disbursements.
Reported disbursements, August 18th through September 8th, 2015. General Fund, $161,580.57. Tower Park KDOT, Tower Park Fund, $62.91. Public Works KDOT Fund, $39,943.99. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $16,374.62. CBD Revitalization, $2,229.95. Waste Fee, $68,513.39. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $1,871.23. Total, $290,576.66. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants number 300673 through 300779 be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Muller, chairperson, Mr. Peterman member, Ms. Kelly member.
I entertain a motion for that. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll call.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, we're down to Ordinance Resolutions and Orders. Ordinance O-15, 2015, Pay Ordinance for Police, Fire, and SME.
This is a summary of Ordinance Number O-15, 2015, an ordinance establishing certain rates of compensation of police officers, firefighters, general services labors, and the interim City Administrative Officer of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, for the 2015-2016 fiscal year, in providing for the manner of paying such compensation and providing effective dates. Police, the hourly rates of pay of the police officers excluding the police chief are set forth for the 2015-2016 fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2015. The work week for the Police Department is defined. The following employees shall receive additional pay: employees who elect to opt out of health insurance, employees with five or more years of service, employees who participate in the educational incentive plan, and employees who successfully complete the POTS physical fitness test. Firefighters, the hourly rates of pay of firefighters excluding the fire chief are set forth for the 2015-2016 fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2015. Employees shall be paid one and a half times their regular rate for hours worked in excess of 40 hours per week. The rates for overtime because of emergency, sickness, or other unforeseen conditions are set forth. The work week for the Fire Department is defined. The following employees shall receive additional pay: employees who elect out of health insurance, employees with five or more years of service, and employees who participate in the educational incentive plan. General Services Labors, the rates of longevity pay for the 2015-2016 fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2015, for employees with five or more years of service are set forth. Interim City Administrative Officer, the rate of pay for Ronald J. Dell interim City Administrative Officer is set forth. The summary was prepared by Jan Seidenbain, City Attorney for the City of Fort Thomas.
I entertain a motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
I, I'd like to make a comment, too, 'cause I did something, uh, that I've never done before on the Public Safety Committee. Now, we're voting on police-fire pay, when, um, so we interviewed police officers, and I have to say, people should know, uh, what outstanding candidates we had to interview. We could've hired everybody we interviewed, really, um, hands down. And, uh, they all commented how they'd had experiences or knew, you know, the officers on the force, and they obviously know leadership, and wouldn't have applied. And, um, you know, people should, uh, know the quality of, uh, the, uh, police force and, uh, well, these weren't, sorry, chief, these weren't firefighters, so I, I don't know about that. I guess they like you all, too, but it's good to see them.
Yeah.
But I mean, it was really good to hear from these, 'cause these surrounding, uh, police forces are from surrounding, as you heard, the Kansas City. They, they do work together quite often, and they know each other, and, and they all want to be a part of this force. And, uh, I think that's a real testament to, to the quality of the, um, you know, police service of the annual city.
Excellent. Good, thank you. Um, Ordinance O-16.
This is a summary of Ordinance O-16, 2015, an ordinance closing and vacating a portion of Riverside Parkway located in the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky. This ordinance closes a portion of Riverside Parkway at its terminus. The summary was prepared by Jan Seidenbain, City Attorney for the City of Fort Thomas.
I'll entertain a motion for this. If you all remember, this is something that came before council a long time ago, where they just adjusting the cul-de-sac at the end of the street there.
Move through.
Is there a second? Or, uh, yes, is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Awesome, thank you. Ordinance O-17, Waste Fees.
Ordinance O-17, 2015, an ordinance establishing and fixing the amount of service charges for the collection and removal of solid waste in curbside residential recycling for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, from September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2017. This ordinance establishes the charges for the collection and removal of solid waste in curbside recycling, residential recycling, from September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2017, which charges shall be levied against property owners. The summary was prepared by Jan Seidenbain, City Attorney for the City of Fort Thomas.
Someone like to make a motion, please?
Move through.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Can we discuss the four...
Sure.
So these were, I just wanted to ask, to make sure, these were, this contract's already in effect, and we don't really have any ability to negotiate that. As, as we talked about increasing the tax rate, which I believe is a prudent thing to do, we do have an opportunity to negotiate this when, 2017?
Next, next year. Is it next year? It's next year.
2017, so we did get the contract, so I'm, uh, I assume we begin negotiations probably for 2017, but 2016?
We would bid that with all providers at that time. So it would be open for bid again.
Yes.
But those contracts have a cost of living adjustment, so it's on man.
They do, they have. So when, when we agreed to this contract with this provider, it had extended, and those were already in place, yes. So it'll be an open bid process at, at the next opportunity, which would be 2017.
So the contract, even though it's got the cost of living increase, it asks council to approve it each time that goes into, triggers...
Yes, because it's an increase, yes.
Aye. Mr. Russ?
(laughing).
Uh, Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. O-18, Tax Rate Ordinance.
This is a summary of Ordinance O-18, 2015, an ordinance providing for the imposition, levy, collection, and apportionment of the taxes of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, for the 2015, for the year 2015, of fixing the tax rate. For 2015, there is imposed as taxes of the city, the sum of .390 upon each $100 valuation of, of the real property, and .390 upon each $100 valuation of personal property and mixed property, and .3971 upon each $100 valuation of motor vehicles subject to taxation within the city limits, and .390 upon each $100 valuation of all franchise valuations, to be used for defraying the current and incidental expenses of city government. The tax bills shall be included, shall be included, the year, owner, description of the property, rate of taxation, the amount due, and amount due. The taxes shall be due and payable at the city building on the date of the, on the date the ordinance has become effective. All bills not paid or postmarked by October 31st, 2015, shall be delinquent. Upon each unpaid tax bill, a penalty of 5% of the amount of the total bill shall be added. The city treasurer shall collect the bills, with a 5% penalty added, and interest at the rate of 8% per annum until paid, on the amount of the tax and waste fee. The city treasurer shall make a full and complete report, and in January 2006, in January of 2016, the city clerk shall add an additional penalty of 10% of the amount of the total bill. The city treasurer shall then proceed to collect the bills with a total penalty of 15%, and interest from November 1st, 2015. The treasurer shall deposit them in the general fund of the city. In the event that a delinquent tax bill is referred to the city attorney for collection, legal action will be initiated to collect the delinquent tax, interest, and penalty levied thereof, and the costs associated with collection. The City of Fort Thomas has a lien upon the property assessed for the tax and waste fees, and all penalties, interest fees, commission charges, and other expenses, including court costs and attorney fees. The summary was prepared by Jan Seidenbain, City Attorney for the City of Fort Thomas.
Okay, that's the first reading. Executive Order EO-06, 2015.
Executive Order EO-6, 2015, an executive order appointing Sam Burley as a probationary firefighter/paramedic, grade 3B, for the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky Fire Department, and fixing his compensation for the fiscal year.
No action required on that. All right, is there anything else? Come before council.
Your new firefighter will be here...
He'll be here on 21st. He starts, uh, actually that morning, 08:00 hours, and, uh, so he'll be here with his family, Thursday, and, and, on his birthday. Your body.
Excellent, excellent. All right, thank you all very much, we're adjourned.